Sir, Councilmember Weest.
Aye.
Whitmer?
Yes, I'm here, even though I'm sick from the flu.
Oh, Lempres?
Present.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
I'm here.
And Mayor DeGolia?
Present. Okay, and do we have any public comments? Anthony has posted the way to provide a public comment. If you have a public comment, if you don't read the chat, you can just verbally indicate that you have one, or you can send a chat, or you can raise your hand on the system.
And just, we don't have anyone joining by phone as it looks, but if you are joining by phone to raise your hand, you'll dial star nine on your phone receiver. But I have no general public comments, just some for the items that I'll announce when we get there. Mayor DeGolia?
Very good. Okay. Well, seeing no public comments, let's move on. The first item on the agenda is consideration and appointment to fill a vacancy on the Audit and Finance Committee.
So, if you'll allow me, Mayor and City Manager Roderick, as you know, there was a resignation on the Audit and Finance Committee, so we need to fill that spot. It's for a term that expires on June 30th, 2022. Bob Polito, former committee member, who only is not serving because he turned out after having served two consecutive terms on the Committee, did express his interest and openness and willingness to serve. We've contacted him, that remains to be true. And so with your, you know, if you're interested, you can make a motion and appoint Bob, and we can take it from there.
Okay. Elizabeth?
I'd like to make a motion, if I can. Or do we have to do questions first? I think beyond any doubt in my mind, I would love to have Bob Polito come back and be on the Finance and Audit Committee. And I think all the other members of the Finance and Audit Committee would welcome him back with open arms also.
We can take a motion, and then we can take comments.
So I move to bring him back on to the Audit Finance Committee.
Great.
Oh, I second, I second the motion.
Okay, and would anyone on the council like to comment on that? Hearing none, could we do a roll call, Anthony?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Whitmer?
Yes.
Weest?
Aye.
Lempres?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Aye.
Mayor DeGolia?
Yes.
Thank you, I'll notify Mr. Polito.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob.
He will be a great addition. We know how good he is because he's been on it for so long. The next item on the agenda is a review, discussion, and direction regarding the League of California Cities Voting Resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is just to provide direction on the, to the council members that are attending the league meeting. The council designated the mayor and/or the vice mayor as the voting delegates. Attached to your staff report is the council conference resolutions packet. It identifies there is one single resolution to amend, or to urge Congress to amend Section 230 of the Federal Communications Decency Act of 1996. And it limits the immunity provided to online platforms where their forums enable criminal activity to be promoted. Ultimately, the proposed policy objectives are that, if enacted, it would incentivize social media companies to establish and implement a reasonable program to identify and remove content that solicits criminal activity. The town itself has not taken any policy position on the resolution. It would be appropriate for the council to provide feedback to the voting delegates. That concludes the staff report.
Okay. Comments?
I do have a question.
Yes?
Just want to confirm, this is the only thing we'll be, they'll be voting on? At the county, at the legal cities conference?
I do believe so.
In terms of policy stuff like this?
Yes. There are subcommittees that make recommendations and policy recommendations up, but this is the only general conference league resolution.
Okay.
Bill?
Um, yeah, I read the document, you know, I, you know, I read all the letters and everything like that. I got a couple of comments. First off, I'm not really sure how a company like Facebook or Google would know whether or not something was criminal intent. Okay, because they say in the pack on page 31, you know, they're talking about, well, you know, they have to enforce and have to flag and remove anything that's of criminal intent. Well, it's not defined. And, 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 you know, I'm not really sure how they can do that because they're not scanning everything. Secondly, if you go to the next page, while they're asking for, I guess Cerritos is asking for, you know, damages, liable for damages. And so, to me, this looks like money. They're just asking for money. And so, and then lastly, you know, they talk about other types of proposals. I'm just not sure that all this stuff makes much sense and is even happening. It wasn't clear to me that, you know, that this was something that, you know, for me, that I could support. And, and, um, and I think we have enough problems here handling local and regional and, and statewide issues as opposed to suddenly jumping into federal issues and, you know, interstate commerce questions and stuff like that. I just really, look, I, I'm not for letting people use social media for, for organizing protests that are going to be gone. And, but, you know, all this stuff could be hidden, and then these companies could be held liable because they didn't know, or they can't scan for it. I just really feel this is kind of a step too far, and it was poorly defined. So my vote would be on this note.
Okay. Other comments?
If I could, through the mayor?
Please.
You know, I think in general, the spirit of the intent of what they're trying to do makes sense. The enforcement arm component of it, I really couldn't figure out. I guess I could say very similar to Bill. But the spirit and intent that, um, to avoid criminal activity to be promoted or be allowed, I think is a reasonable, um, reasonable way of saying, obviously for most people, that it shouldn't be allowed. So, you know, at a spirit and tent focus, you know, I agree with it, but I have a difficult time figuring out how our involvement and the enforcement arm of it helps.
Well, that's how I feel, so.
Other comments?
Shouldn't be reworded.
Yeah. From, if we're on comments, yeah, Mike, from my perspective, what this really does, I think, is just eliminate an immunity. So it's sort of undoing a shield. And therefore, Bill, all those issues you raised would be worked out at, you know, in a civil trial or another location. This just says there's, there's no longer going to be a uniformed shield protecting social media companies from this kind of thing.
Yeah, if I, if I can comment, I, that, that's the way I read it also, is that it, it takes away a shield from criminal activity that appears to, at least by the discussion of the material, it appears to have been a very broad shield that had been interpreted to include that. It doesn't go into the issue of intent. It specifically says, uh, that online platforms establish and implement a regional program to identify and take down content which solicits criminal activity. So it's not dealing with the issue of intent. I think that would get, obviously have to be dealt with in the legal machinations as they go through it. But it, I, the intent seems, of, of the resolution seems to be taking away criminal activity from any protection under this broad shield that has existed.
So, I'll make my, I'll make my comments about it. And the reason I asked that it be brought back to council is because of what we were just all talking about, that it is a little confusing. And, um, uh, I had the same questions in my mind when I was reading through it, that the league has, and I don't know if everyone read on page 14 of 20, the league had four overarching questions. At the end of the day, how, how would we assess this proposed resolution? What about free speech and government censorship? What are expectations for cities when they receive information from a social media platform about potentially credible threat in their respective communities? Does then the city become liable for having information from a social media platform, and then the threat occurs? Didn't we at, in Atherton have an online, it was a parade going past? There was a call for cars to caravan and go in front of four of our residents recently. And I thought that our officers handled that really well in a, in a very calm and productive matter, manner. And so, I, I just, um, I, I just find it hard to envision how the social media platforms are going to manage this type of a, uh, thing if we vote yes on it. But I, I can see that it has widespread support. And in my gut, I would initially say yes. You know, we do want to limit the content that causes damage to our cities.
If you think about the example this is pointed at, as I understand it, I think it answers a lot of the questions. One, remember, the general expectation is that you don't have protection from laws, right? The laws generally apply to everybody. And in this instance, as I understand what happened, is the city of Cerritos said there were communications going out that explicitly called for looting of a mall in their town that were being published by a social media company.
That's right.
And their point is that the social media company, somebody should be able to hold the social media company responsible for that in the same way it would if I went out there and shouted about it, or if, if, you know, generally, if you take, you can't, for example, take out and add to newspaper, I think, a call for looting at a, at a certain time. The newspaper would have some obligations on that.
Right. So what's your opinion, Mike? What's your position on this?
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with this resolution. And I, I think Section 230 is going to get a significant overview in the next Congress anyway. That, it's going to raise a lot of the issues you all are talking about because they're going to go specifically at some political things. But I think this seems pretty clear. If there's planned criminal activity, that it's not unreasonable to expect the laws to apply to the social media company that's communicating about that activity. Or that's not communicated, it's probably not the right verb. Hosting communications about that.
Facilitating it.
Yeah.
Is it facilitating the publishing of it?
That's probably correct, yes.
Okay. I mean, that's my gut.
Yeah. For me, I just don't see how those companies are going to see that information. And I think it's a lot of vagueness. They could say, hey, let's go meet. I know Elizabeth is correct. With regards to, there was the situation where there was the march, and Redwood City Police determined that there was some Instagram or posts that implied that they were going to go down to Stanford Mall and knock, knock in some of the windows. And, and the police were there to avert that. And I think that that's fine. But I, I can see where there's instances where it's not clear. And then a city like Cerritos, which they want to have people liable, is going to go sue Facebook or Instagram or somebody for something that they didn't have a way of monitoring it. And so, look, I'm not, I'm not for allowing people to use the social media, you know, for criminal activity. But I, I'm not for any criminal activity, actually. But, you know, I just don't see how they can do it. It's not clear. Yeah, I do want to be clear about it, okay? Okay? And so, you know, I just think that, I think it's, I'm not saying the intent of this was bad. I just believe it needs some refinement before I feel good about it. That, that, that was my point. If everybody else wants to go along with it, I, you know, I'll go along with it. But I just think that it's not, it needs more work.
Mayor, where are we?
Okay.
Through the mayor, do you think that at this point, you know, being that it's in a resolution format, Mike and everybody here, that it would be, the details would be ironed out? You know, this is kind of, if I might say, a preliminary move, if, if it's trying to get the message out that these platforms or hosts have to be held accountable, and that obviously Sacramento irons out the details?
Well, I, I think it's a resolution for the league, and it's a position that the league itself is going to take. They cannot force a law. They can advocate for the law being pushed through. So it's, you know, just like the league comes out on one side or another on the SB Senate bills and the Assembly bills that come through. And then, you know, the-
Though we should remember, this is a federal, federal law.
Yeah, I think that if, if this passes, then the league will advocate for it at the federal level. And if, and if it needs to, it'll advocate for it at the state level. But the proposal, as I read it, was at the federal level.
It would have to be at the federal level.
Yeah. Well, then I think the spirit is there.
Interstate commerce.
Yeah. But it's a Communication Decency Act of 1996, is what they're aimed at. Section 230 of that. Though it's a specific federal law that they want to-
Yeah. And you feel comfortable, Mike, that we should advocate for it?
Yeah. I mean, the thing I, I, yes, I think the answer is yes. I'm comfortable. But, you know, this, I'm not going to die on this hill. If, if nobody asked my opinion, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have volunteered it.
Oh, I, I don't know that we need a resolution. It seems like there's a consensus. George, do we need a resolution on this?
Uh, you, you don't. It was just providing feedback and direction to the voting delegates.
I appreciate that. I really appreciate everyone's input and guidance on this. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on to item number five, which deals with the memorandum of understanding with the Joint Powers Board regarding closure of the Caltrain Station and the associated maintenance and use agreement for that property.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In January of this year, the town received a proposal from Caltrain requesting support for the closure of the Atherton Caltrain Station in consideration of various community benefits. The council discussed the proposal at its meeting on January 15th of this year and directed staff to work with Caltrain to develop a memorandum of understanding inclusive of the proposal and concerns expressed by the council. An ad hoc committee was formed consisting of Mayor DeGolia and Councilmember Weest to facilitate negotiation of the MOU. Since the proposal was received, we've all been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Caltrain was hit rather hard with a ridership drop of about 95%. And so they were hit with a low of approximately 5% of pre-pandemic levels. And Caltrain's operations, revenues, and balance sheets have changed significantly since that proposal was originally made to the town. Caltrain is currently seeking approval of an eight-cent sales tax measure. And that measure is on the ballots of San Mateo County, San Francisco County, and Santa Clara County. Funds for, from the measure, if approved, will assist in funding the electrification and other improvements to the Caltrain system, as well as assist with operations to keep Caltrain running. We've been advised that there's a strong possibility that if the measure doesn't pass, that Caltrain may cease its operations. Staff in the ad hoc sub, subcommittee met with Caltrain staff on several occasions to discuss terms of the MOU, as well as the maintenance and use agreement that would allow the town to utilize the Caltrain Station property and integrate it with the town center project. Caltrain has initiated its environmental review and equity analysis related to the closure, as well as held some public outreach efforts in a public hearing related to the potential closure. The station closure would result in significant benefits to JPB's passenger rail service, the system and its riders, including reduced travel time, increased ridership, as well as capital and operating cost savings. In an effort to, in an effort to be a good public partner, the town would agree to provide its concurrence to the closure of the station in exchange for certain actions to promote public safety improvements along the corridor, including safety fencing and four quadrant gates at the Watkins Avenue crossing. The town would also take on the maintenance and have use of none, of the non-operating portions of the station property, as well as other public benefits. Though there's still some fine tuning of the language of the MOU, as it moves through the legal review process, the major terms of the agreement are provided in the staff report. And those include that the JPB would be responsible for all closure-related actions, including removal of platforms and access crossings, and the installation of safety fencing that would be both temporary and permanent. The JPB would be responsible to install the four quadrant gates at Watkins Avenue, and to provide funding to the town for station area improvements and for potential access improvements to the Menlo Park Station. The town would take on the maintenance responsibilities for the non-operating property at and around the station, be responsible for design and construction of site building of station building and site improvements in the station area, as well as to implement any desired access improvements. The maintenance and use agreement is the mechanism by which the town would take responsibility for that station area. Though it's revocable, the term of the agreement is 20 years, and it's automatically extended in five-year increments. The town would take on the maintenance responsibility for the site and be permitted to use the site for general municipal activities, including vehicular and pedestrian access, parking, and for civic events, amongst other general municipal needs. The town would also be permitted to improve the property. We would have to advise the railroad of any planned activities and conduct them in a manner that doesn't impact rail operations. Activities that have a potential to impact rail operations or, or the tracks would need to follow certain work procedures, primarily related to safety and making sure that, for example, if you're working on the tracks, that there's appropriate flaggers and things advising the workers, as well as the trains of people on the tracks and trains coming. The town would be required to indemnify the railroad regarding its use and activities on the property, as well as to maintain special insurance to cover activities in the rail corridor. And the railroad would accept the property in an as-is-whereas condition if the agreement were terminated for any reason. We're seeking your direction regarding the proposed agreements. Town staff, as well as Caltrain staff, are, are here and available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of clarification? Elizabeth? And Mike?
You're on mute.
So, thank you, Robert, for that overview and for giving us all the information in the packet. It seems to me that the benefits that has, have been talked about to the town of Atherton for closure, for being a good partner in agreeing to the closure, would be the removal of the platform, that hazardous holdout platform, installation of some security fencing, and the quad gates at, at Watkins. It seems to me that also, I, what I've read in the, in the packet is that irregardless of whether or not we agree to close or not, they would, they would have to do that anyway.
Wait, is this a question of clarification?
I want to ask that. Is, is that, is that the, uh, true? That they would have to remove the holdout station and install some fencing? Maybe it's not as beautiful as the one that we would prefer, and do quad gates at Watkins?
Okay, so I'm just going to add a couple of additional items on the benefit side. So Caltrain would allow us to take on that station property and to use it for municipal activities, as well as they are proposing some funding to the town to make improvements in that area, as well as potential access improvements. With regards to the station, if the station were to remain in operation, there would be significant improvements required to remove the holdout rule?
Do they have to do that anyway for electrification?
I, I can let Caltrain answer that question, but it's my understanding that the, the whole, for the holdout to be, holdout rule to be removed, they'd have to make significant improvements at the station. And I don't know that that was proposed immediately. I see a hand.
Uh, yeah, I've got Mike, and then I've got Bill.
Okay. And so there's significant investments that would need to be made. And I think that the timing of those investments, I don't know that they would line up with, directly with electrification.
Can I clarify the question a bit for Madam Vice Mayor? Are you asking if the town elected not to support the closure, but at some point in the future, Caltrain opted to close the station, would they be required to do those three things? Is that your question?
That's really not my question. My question is, is that we're negotiating with them, and we're saying, okay, we'll close the station. And in return, you're going to, uh, remove the holdout platform. You're going to put a pretty fence up. You're going to do quad gates at Watkins. And you're going to provide some funding to do a bike path to Menlo Station, which I don't think that they can do because of all sorts, lots of other things. So I think that what we're negotiating as a benefit to us for closing the station is something that they would have to do anyway. If we didn't, if we said, no, we're going to keep it open because we, at least on a minimal weekend basis. Because of the history, we don't want to lose that. Because of the potential ridership. Once you close it, you never get it back, and things like that. They would still have to do the holdout station remodel. They'd still have to do fencing along-
Can we keep to the questions here? But we're going to have a discussion, but I'd really like to focus on questions of clarification. Mike, did you have a question?
That's my question. And it wasn't answered.
I'm going to ask Sebastian from Caltrain to answer what they would be required to do with regards to the electrification project.
Sure, happy to. And Sebastian Petty, Deputy Chief of Planning for Caltrain. So, to, to answer the question, no, we would not do any of those activities for the electrification project. So in the long term, it would be Caltrain's desire to remove the holdout rule configuration. That's not associated with the immediate electrification project. It is something in the overall life of the system we would like to do. Certainly, if and when high-speed rail is ever on the corridor, it would need to be removed at that point. It's not part of the near-term plans for electrification. The, the removal of the holdout rule could be accomplished a couple of ways. One would be, as has been discussed, by closing the station and simply removing the platforms. If we were to keep the station in service, but need to reconfigure it in a way such that it didn't have the holdout rule in place, that would be a much more sizable project. So it would really be a rebuilding of the station up to modern standards.
Okay, yeah. You're muted again.
And you think that would be within the next three to five years?
No.
No, we, we wouldn't. A, we don't, first, we don't really have funding to do a project of that scale. It's a roughly $30 million project, the last estimated. So although it's something we'd like to accomplish, it's not necessarily an immediately critical item for us. At this time, we don't have funding. So it could be quite a number of years in the future.
Mike, did you want to ask a question?
I did. Elizabeth, are you, are you done?
You're, you're muted, Elizabeth.
I'm done. I'm done. I'm done. I'm done. I'm more than done. I'm well done.
I had a couple of questions, which are probably pretty basic. Robert, what exactly is the railroad station property when you say we've got a license to use the railroad station property? What is that exactly?
Exhibit provided in the staff report. And so it extends actually parallel to the tracks all the way from Fair Oaks Lane to Maple Avenue. There's a a thin strip that runs, it's about 20 feet wide or so, and we actually have part of that area incorporated into the corp yard. But then you also have the area where the station building is. And so if you'd like, I can try and share that on my screen for everybody. If you don't have that exhibit.
I don't see it. Is it attached to the?
It is. There's two copies. One is an attachment. One, one is an attachment to. If you hold on just a quick second.
I'm looking through. In any event, it runs along the the track. It's 20 feet. Oh, I see. It's 20 feet. Yeah, that's. Not. Yeah.
It's open now.
Yeah, so I guess my question then goes to, we have a non-exclusive, a right to non-exclusive use of that subject to, I forget how to phrase it, prior rights granted to others. What exactly does that mean? What does not exclusive mean? Someone could build housing there, for example?
No, so when I say the prior rights, that there may be underlying utilities within that area. Caltrain may have let fiber companies put facilities in there and there they have rights that were granted to them for their stuff prior to us entering into this agreement.
But this means there could be no further rights granted by.
They may, I said, that was something that we've been trying to work on with Caltrain. There was a little bit of concern about tying the hand of future Caltrain boards or something with regards to future rights, but with regards to the agreement, the intent is that they wouldn't hopefully wouldn't let somebody just come through and do something. How, as far as housing is concerned, number one, the property really isn't, the limited property that's there really isn't suitable for anything like that. And any development of that property currently would have to comply with, you know, town ordinances, et cetera.
Yeah, I think I, and I think the big word there is currently. I guess Mona could maybe, are you, who's looking at that? I don't understand what that means. License is not exclusive and what that means for the future.
Well, then go ahead, Mona.
That is actually one of the terms that we're currently working with or I've emailed council for the JPB to flesh out in a little bit more detail under which what types of conditions the license could possibly be revoked. I agree with you that there's a little bit of ambiguity there. But that's something that we're hoping to flesh out. From my understanding, it's the desire of Caltrain, Caltrain to have as much flexibility as possible to manage and direct its operations in the way that it sees fit. But at the same time, the town does want some sort of assurance of continuity of use. So again, I don't have that answer for you today, but it's something that I'm hoping to have before you approve this.
Okay, and my last question is about timing. What assurances do we have about timing on all this? Is it, is there a time expectation? Is there a time certainty? Say, for example, quad gates? Funding, whatever this is, this is all going to be done in a year, two years? Do we have any sense of that at all?
There's an attachment to the memorandum of understanding. I think it's exhibit D that shows the estimated timeline for various activities.
Yeah, both both start and finish.
And are these enforceable in any way, shape or form, or these are our hopes, our expectations? What is this?
Well, I the desire is that as we, you know, just like with any agreement between public entities, the intent is that you know, we all follow follow through as far as the legal ramifications for failure to follow through. I'll leave that to Mona.
They are estimated dates, so there could be a little bit of flexibility as to the start date or completion date, but all contracts are governed by operations of good faith and operating under good faith and reasonableness. So, for example, under station closure, if that were to be completed on February, I'm just giving you give an example, seventh as opposed to the first, there's substantial compliance with the terms here. But if it was put off significantly beyond that, then we would have a potential claim for breach of contract. And this is a contract, even though it's called a memorandum of understanding, it is a contract for all intents and purposes.
That's great. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, Bill, you had comment questions?
Yeah, so along the same lines that Elizabeth asked, my understanding is for high-speed rail and when you your strategic plan showed the removal of of the holdout station. So I I agree with Elizabeth that this is going to, you're gonna have to do this anyway, and you're gonna have to do the quad gates anyway. There are some benefits that are not there, but and so I wanted to point those out. Maybe they're not going to happen at the same time. When you say you don't have any money, I guess I have raised my question as to how if you don't have any money to do anything, then how are you going to meet the three-year deadline for removing the the $30 million of the holdout station? So that that would be a question. I'd like to understand that a little bit better. I'd like to understand how a three-minute improvement in passing trains brings 500 people into the train station. I'd like to understand how that got calculated. And then lastly, I'd like to understand also where it talks about nothing in this MOU will be construed to create any contractual agreement or relationship. And in fact, all this stuff here is based on faith. It's it's non-binding. And so I don't don't see really a firm commitment to do any of this. It's this is what we think we're going to do. This is what we hope to do, but there's no commitment. Yet the only commitment is on behalf of us, which you could just decide to close the station anyway. But my understanding is, is that there's really no commitment on the part of Caltrain at this point in time, the way it's written. Is that correct?
Let me just give one clarification before Mona jumps in. With the closure of the station, the cost to remove the platforms, et cetera, is not 30 million. It's substantially less. And then the funding that the work that would need to be done by related to high-speed rail would, I assume, be done by high-speed rail and not by Caltrain, and that would be on their timetable. And then so for the other items, I'll go ahead and pass it to Mona.
Thank you, Councilmember Winmar. The notion about this not being a contract is is yet another one of the points that I have articulated to council representing the JPB and I wish to discuss with. From all intents and purposes, I see this as a contract. There's offer, consideration and acceptance, and just because it's called a memorandum of understanding does not diminish the enforceability and the legality of it being a contract. So I have requested that that specific clause be removed. If there's members of Caltrain who would also like to provide their understanding as to how they view that agreement, they're welcome to do that. But again, that is a point that I have raised and wish to resolve.
So if I could have a follow-on question is if it's not been resolved, then why are we looking at it now? Why wouldn't we look at it after you resolve it?
I'm hoping that it's a non-issue. I, the subcommittee and others have negotiated the substantive deal points, and I have reviewed the agreements for legal enforceability and to make sure that it reflects the points that the town wants to make sure in there. I emailed their council only yesterday, so out of fairness, it's been possibly less than 24 hours. And again, the idea is that from a conceptual perspective, the substantive deal points are addressed through the council today. The council can discuss those and the legal issues are worked out between now and our next meeting.
So we're so we're so we're conceptually approving it, or are we approving it and we'll never see it again?
I think it's to come at the next meeting.
You are. So this is, so this is just a discussion?
Correct.
Okay, I thought we were approving it, approving the closure of the station. Let me go back to what was asked for in the.
You are, you are providing direction to staff with respect to the deal points in support of closure of the station. So you are actually providing support for that direction. Mona, the provision that Councilmember Winmar read about the relationship between the parties, I think the MOU shall create a contractual obligation or relationship. It's not, sorry, not an obligation, but a relationship, meaning employer, employee, contractor, contractor, that sort of dynamic.
Right, so I'm I am proposing that the balance of the language be kept in there because those are true statements. We're not joint ventures, we're not employee employers, but we aren't in a contractual relationship. We have contractual privy with one another, and that's the point that I'd like to make sure is reflected into this agreement.
Right. I have a question. Is this form of the MOU and the maintenance and use agreement that we have in the packet today, is this the last form that Caltrain provided to us? And approximately when was that that it was provided?
The answer to that is yes, in about a week ago.
Okay, great. So so this reflects what has been discussed between the subcommittees.
That's correct.
Okay, great. And are there any other questions of clarification?
I do, through the mayor.
Okay, please, Carrie.
This question, I guess, I'm going to reach out to Sebastian, and it's related to the platform removal. Is not the removal of the platform not only a public safety advantage, because you now remove it so that pedestrians no longer walk up there, because that's an obvious concern? It is also an advantage because you won't have people lingering up on the track area, and therefore the conductors will no longer have to, if they see, they won't see, hopefully they don't see people. Obviously, they'll still be able to honk their horns, but it's a safety factor and also it should reduce noise based on less horns being blown for people up there on the platform area.
That's that's correct. If were the station to be closed, we would want to secure that part of the corridor with fencing for exactly those reasons so that it would not be a potential safety issue, and that would remove the the potential motivation for conductors to blow their horn as as they're seeing folks on the platform who could potentially access one of those crossings. That is one of the reasons they're blowing.
Thank you, Sebastian.
Elizabeth, do you have to end up?
I just want to follow on what Carrie was asking Sebastian about the holdup platform. So in our MOU, do we have assurances and timelines of commitment from Caltrain that they will remove the platform and make the tracks safer within a reasonable period of time? Because if they don't have the money and and then the second question is, you know, you said it's far less than the 25, 30 million to remove the platform than what has been told, actually to me, I believe, that it was going to cost that much to remove the platform and make it safe. So number one, if you don't have the money now, you probably aren't going to have it next month or the following month, and we just give our approval to close the station. What is our assurance that it would be removed in a reasonable timeframe to make it so that the horns aren't blown continuously?
Sure. So let me let me take that in two parts. I think one of the things that's important to clarify is we're talking about two different things. There's removal of the station, which involves closing the station, removing the platforms. That's different than rebuilding the station, which would involve keeping the station open, but rebuilding it to modernize it in a way where you didn't have the holdout. The rebuilding is the project that is approximately $30 million project. Removing the holdout rule, so just closing it, taking out the platforms, removing the facilities is a much less expensive proposal. And so what I believe is outlined in the MOU is a series of activities that Caltrain would commit to. The first of those are associated with the the immediate closure of the station, and so that would include putting up temporary fencing. It would include decommissioning the facilities that are there. And it would include the removal of the platform. We we have money to do that. It's in the order of hundreds of thousands of dollars, not millions, to do that removal piece. And so we've identified funds that that Caltrain has that could be used for that purpose, and what we've committed to in the MOU is that we would start that work on or around beginning of December, and we'd commit to having it completed. You know, as soon as what we specified is our estimate. So that would be kind of the first set of activities that would happen. Things like the installation of quad gates would take longer, the items that have to be engineered and procured before they're installed.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Lewis, just to piggyback on that, if you look at, it's approximately page 11 of this item, exhibit D, that provides the funding and implementation schedule. So it itemizes what is supposed to happen through Caltrain, approximately how much it's going to cost them, when they will be starting, and when they anticipate completing that specific project. And the platform crossing removal is articulated there. It is the fourth item, costs about $400,000, and it's again, as as Mr. Petty just indicated, estimated to be completed by June 1st.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I have page 11, but I don't have any of the exhibits in my binder.
Page 11 is exhibit D.
It's a it's attachment. It's exhibit A. Mine is exhibit A, page 11.
It's exhibit D. But it's called attachment. It's part of attachment one, and it is identified as exhibit D. It's on page 11 of the staff report.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions of clarification? Hearing none, we'll go to public comments. Anthony, I think you have one or two public comments.
We do. We have.
Why don't you read the whatever has been sent into you first, and then we'll let people who want to comment directly comment.
Certainly. The first public comment we received for the item was by Roger Mertens, and it was just something that was sent in through a voicemail message that the town received, and I followed up with the resident to clarify his statements, and he simply noted that he's in opposition of closing the station.
Okay.
The next one, we have someone on the phone. We have an Arissa Dexter on the phone, and Arissa, I'm going to come to you now to have you unmuted. So you should be able to speak. And Arissa, you have three minutes. Thank you.
The holdout rule only applies when a train is actually stopping at the station. To eliminate, can you hear me?
We can.
To eliminate the holdout rule, the one and only thing that Caltrain needs to do is to cease stopping at the at the Atherton Station. Nothing else needs to be done. There is absolutely no requirement to install four quadrant gates, even under high-speed rail, because high-speed rail is going to operate at 110 miles an hour or less. Therefore, there is no FRA requirement. There is no other requirements to that would that would ensure that the dangerous crossings and so forth would be removed. I would like to I'd like to congratulate the town on negotiating an outstanding package of incentives from Caltrain. Since Caltrain is not required to provide the town with any concessions, I encourage the city council to execute this excellent MOU concession package. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Thank you.
Okay.
And we have one additional person that would like to make a comment. They're on the line. Just going to get them queued up here. And so number is 408-206-6262. You should be able to make a comment now. You have the mic. You have three minutes.
And and please identify your name and.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This is Roland.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mayor, this is Roland Prograni, San Jose, thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to touch on a Caltrain ridership, safety at Fair Oaks, high speed rail and funding. On Caltrain ridership, the reason ridership dropped 95% is because Sam trains stopped operating baby bullets, which were operating at the 150% of capacity. What they're operating right now are trains that used to operate probably in a region of more like 20% capacity. This is why people have stopped using the system. It's driving, it's so much more viable right now. Very briefly, on the point that, and there is a made, I respectfully disagree. They need quad gates to increase, actually, the High Speed Rail Authority needs quad gates to increase speed to 110 miles an hour. The thing I really want to talk to you about is a Fair Oaks and the safety and the impact of the that the platform has. And that platform is causing the distance between the two gates to be 55 feet. If you just destroy this platform, nothing's going to change, the system, the distance is still going to be the same. But the High Speed Rail EIR actually proposes to realign the tracks, at which point in time you will only have 30 feet between the gates. That gives you a safer intersection at Fair Oaks. And another thing it does is that it reduces the gate downtime warning, which is calculated at one and a half feet per second. So if you reduce the the distance to 30 feet divided by one and a half is 20 seconds plus a five second, you know, safety gap. And right now it's 55. If you reduce it to 30 feet between the gates, you are going to save 15 seconds wait time at the gate every time a train goes by. On high speed rail, and then actually, the High Speed Rail Authority are proposing to do this, it is in their EIR for the peninsula. The thing to, yes, I see it, thank you. The thing to remember is that High Speed Rail, I got the exclusive right to develop High Speed Rail in California for speeds in excess of 125 miles an hour. This is covered in CPU C-section 185032. And I just forwarded my EIR comments to Mr. Ovadia earlier today. And the last point is about funding is that Mayor Ricardo in San Jose has to secure $7.1 billion for the line between and including Derision and Gilroy. And MTC has basically given them direction for the nine party MOU to basically reconvene and make appropriate changes. This is the MOU that currently covers the 2.2 electrification between Gilroy and San Francisco, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any other public comment? Yes, Frank.
Wait a minute, Mr.
Yeah, if you could.
Okay, I unmuted, thank you very much, council members. First of all, I would like to congratulate the council because candidly, the MOU that you negotiated, that you have in your agenda exceeded my expectations, to be honest. I thought it was great before, I think it's even better now. All the benefits that have been detailed in terms of the extension of the quiet zone through the station would be important to us in Lloyden Park where I live, the addition of the quad gates at Watkins would likely expand the quiet zone south. Getting rid of that holdout station and the safe barrier is fantastic. But I I do walk down to the train station almost every day because Lloyden Park is a walking neighborhood, and that's the only thing we really can do these days is walk around our neighborhood. But I do walk down there, and to be candid, the Civic Center is a much larger building than I had envisioned from the pictures that you showed us a couple of years ago. And getting control of that parking lot, given the size of the building, I think is is a very important benefit to the town. Getting those additional parking spaces is very important. I think the I imagine with the building that large with the number of public agencies that are in there and the like, you'll have an increased use of the town center. And having the extra parking spaces would be very important. And the ability to use that area, because you already use Holbrook Park in the summertime for events, which is great. But I think you could have some additional things in the town center, such as fairs and the like, hot trucks or whatever the other towns do around us, that would be nice, a nice community benefit. So as I I've spoken to the council in the past and I wrote to the council when I was riding the train up until March 14th or so, when I couldn't go anywhere anymore, because all my offices were closed. I went either to Redwood City or to Menlo Park to get the limited service trains. Menlo Park is only a mile, the stations are only a mile apart. In the grand scheme of transit authorities around the United States, that's a very short distance. And it seems that only 114 persons were taking it in the past. That's 1.6% of the town residents, assuming they're all town residents because it's a free parking lot. And that tends to draw people from other places sometimes. So I think the benefits of closing the station and getting all the benefits that the town is so ably negotiated far exceed any detriment to any town members from having to go down to Menlo Park or up to Redwood City to catch the train. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Frank. Are there any other public comments?
We received one additional comment in the chat from Bijal Vikil, and he simply stated, let's move. He said he's in favor for all the reasons Ms. Dexter highlighted, let's move the town forward.
Okay. Is there anybody else on the call that wishes to make a public comment?
I have no others.
Okay, saying none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion. Elizabeth?
So, well, you know, it's it's a very difficult decision to make because there is so much history with the Atherton Train Station. There's so much legacy and connection with our town, with our residents, with leaders in our town who have worked tirelessly for many, many years to create the railway and the station. And it just it just hurts me to think that we're going to have to close it to save maybe three minutes of cumulative of downtime and and get in compensation, things that I think they're going to have to do anyway once the high speed rail of electrification is is in force. But I do see how, and I've heard a lot from residents in the local area that are being impacted negatively by the noise, by the train, by the horns, by that distress in the middle of the night. And actually, I live I live across El Camino near Menlo College, and I hear the train in the middle of the night. So I don't know if it's just gotten worse or if it's always been there, we just are more sensitive to it. But I do hear what our residents are saying. And if if we can derive some significant benefit from being a good partner in this and and working with Caltrain instead of against Caltrain to make our community center a better place and reuse and repurpose the station itself in some way. And I don't know what kind of monetary benefit we can have from that. I I hear words, but I don't see the monetary benefit yet. But I'm inclined to go forward and close the station.
Okay, other comments? Bill?
Yeah, you know, I've gone, I've been on both sides of this, you know, one time I feel, yeah, let's go do it. Other time, you know, because of the other ramifications that perhaps may come out of Sacramento. And other times, you know, and from residents that are saying, hey, even if we just have Saturday services, a worthwhile service. I think that, like Elizabeth, we the improvements are going to have to have been made anyway to support the plans, not only for Caltrain, but also, well, their strategic plans that they put forward. And to say that they, well, we wouldn't do those, I think, is inconsistent with what they put in the strategic plan that we looked at about a year and a half ago. So I'm concerned that there's some, you know, some weasel wording in here that says, hey, you know, maybe we're not going to do that. If if we can tighten the wording up and force to have the the quad gates put in place that we've been asking for for well over 10 years, then I'm, you know, I'm happy there are benefits to closing the station that not only go to the residents that live around there, but, you know, the use of the parking places and and, you know, putting up a fence that we would like, I think, you know, there are some benefits to it. So, you know, you guys that were on the negotiation committee, yourself and Kerry, you know, I think you you guys got all the asks that we asked for. I just would like to see currently the the contract tightened up a little bit. And one of the things that I did ask for, you know, when we first had this conversation, you know, I think that there should be a shuttle service, not this situation where we're going to have a discussion of, you know, maybe we'll put a bike path in, I don't see how you're going to do that to either Redwood City or to Menlo Park. Just have a shuttle service periodically to meet the meet some of the needs, I think that that would be used. And it doesn't have to be all the time, you can just tie it into to certain times of the day, like rush hour, etc. So if we could add that in, I'd be like 100% in favor. But if it doesn't get in, but we tighten up the contract, then I can support it. Because of the benefits that that we might get and the benefits to our residents that are kind of intangibles.
Okay, thank you, Kerry, would you like to make the comment?
I didn't know if Mike wanted to go.
Mike?
I'm, so an hour later, Kerry, up to you. No, no, I just, since I'm on the committee, I kind of. Oh, okay, I'm happy to, I'm happy to jump in then. I am, like everybody else, I think there's a special attachment to the train service and the train station. And it's sad to see it it going, and it may be a result of a lot of decisions that were made, you know, decades ago. But I think at this point, there are benefits to closing the system in the right way. And their benefits, not just the town of Atherton, I should add, but to the entire system. And there's there's, you know, efficiency and environmental and other benefits that attach to everybody uses the the train up and down the entire corridor, which which I think are important. Having said all that, there's a couple of things in this agreement that I'm not super comfortable with. One of them I mentioned, and I'd like to make sure we understand exactly what what the license, the non-exclusivity of this license we're getting actually is. I think that's important. I also think things have changed since we started this process, process started a long time ago. And George always corrects me, but I think it's taken too long. And and it's, you know, the conditions have changed. One of the conditions that's changed is Caltrain is no longer, you know, they're suffering some serious fiscal issues right now. And one of my concerns with this agreement is that we agree to close the station right away. And then we get these soft promises that they're going to spend money down the road, and I'm not sure they're going to even have the money to spend. And that makes me a little uncomfortable. And so there are a couple of things in the in the agreement that when you look at the trigger events that I find interesting or that I'd love to reconsider if we could, one of which is, it's not clear to me why the design and building of the safety improvements on Watkins Avenue would be tied to the closure of the station, why that would be a trigger event for that, as opposed to why that wouldn't start as soon as we sign the agreement. And so I'd like to see us push on that. I am concerned that there's a legitimate risk that we will do our part. And Caltrain, they've got plenty of, you know, waffle room in this thing, wiggle room in this thing, that they may they may back off for the reason that they just don't have the money, depending on, you know, right now, there's a lot riding on a ballot measure that, you know, is last I saw, it's got a good chance of not passing. And ridership is down 95%, nobody knows what it's going to come back to. So those are real, real concerns for me. Having said that, I think this is generally the right the right agreement, like to see us tighten it as much as we can. And for me, tightening, I mean, let's make sure we understand what we're getting and do whatever we can to make sure that Caltrain is really on the hook to spend the money and put the things in they say they're going to do.
Okay, thank you. Kerry?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I I think that everything, everybody has been saying, both myself and the mayor, you know, definitely took this up in the subcommittee and also with Caltrain. I mean, nobody here, I mean, thought that the process would be this long. And I think that COVID-19 throws another spin, but also with that same spin that there's a some degree of compassion to try to understand what an agency that that that, you know, has has troubles and then COVID makes it, you know, amplifies those troubles. It's very disappointing. But you, I think that to try to have some form of empathy for them limping through the system and trying to be part of, you know, which I can't say that historically we have been. And I think that the mayor and myself, and I think this council in general, has tried to create better relationships with Caltrain. And, you know, the closure of the station, I think, could probably just be one of those decisions that they could make. I think the MOU agreement gives us an opportunity to to have some positive outcome for our residents in the sense that if the station's closure does exist or does occur, that we can, you know, it's it's a time for our our community as well with the Civic Center component. And so transitioning a station area that we haven't received a lot of benefit for to potentially create a positive benefit for community, the safety component, the ridership component for an agency that's struggling to get people on the ridership. So if other jurisdictions are able to pick up a piece of the ridership because we don't have a station, it it's kind of the cookie of support for the system. It's a cookie of support for ourselves to, you know, finish off the Civic Center and blend in the station and create something with the area there. And as a resident in Lloyden Park had mentioned, you know, some of the benefits of utilizing the area that Caltrain, you know, has has agreed to allow us to use. You know, and I think that, you know, Rosemary would probably be awful happy that that we took over the maintenance component. I'm sure that was probably her input in this as well. So, you know, I think there are a lot of positives, there's clearly uncertainty. We don't have the crystal ball for tomorrow. I guess we can all sit here and say, we hope that everything has, this is written in the MOU, comes to fruition. But I think that we're all here in good faith. I think that both sides believe that as this would get executed, that it would all happen. So that would be my two bits.
Yep, I think that's well said. I mean, just from my perspective, I'm I'm happy with the agreement. I I think that we could tighten it up. I absolutely share the concern that Mike expressed about given Caltrain's financial situation, that we could see the station shut down and then they might not have the money to do anything other than the initial items. And and the big cost and the most time consuming item is clearly putting in the quad gates at Watkins, which is a big benefit to Atherton. I think it's debatable whether that would ultimately get done or not. I know some think that it would get done and others doubt it. We've talked about it for more than 10 years, and we've been told on and off by Caltrain that they would do it, and it never happened. So I don't have a great deal of confidence it would be happening if it weren't for this agreement. And and I think it's it's critical to be in here. It's it's the greatest benefit in here. If we can, if it's done, we are then able to unilaterally establish a quiet zone. And if the station's not there, it'll be a quiet zone through all of Atherton. I think that's a huge benefit. I think that's a huge benefit to our residents. I I do think that Caltrain can unilaterally shut down this station, but they incur a lot of ill will if they do that. And they don't want to incur that ill will. So I'm glad that they've worked with us to put this agreement together. And I think that they worked with us in a in a fruitful way where where we really did work together. So I I think what Bill and others have said about how we've worked to improve this relationship is true. I'm happy with that. And like Kerry said, I expect to see that followed through with the agreement. I I understand there's there's some risk there, and that also makes me uncomfortable. So I I I don't think there's a quid pro quo between closing the station and and waiting, whatever it is, a certain number of months before design work has begun on Watkins. And the funding for the quad gates will come from a different source. So I would like to see that happen as soon as the station is closed. But I am happy with the agreement. I I think it's a good agreement for Atherton. And I am also sad to see the station closed. It's a real asset for us. It's been with us a long time. People have utilized it. They utilize it much less now than they have in the past because we're not going to San Francisco as much as we did as a population previously, but and this is one of the changes that happened. It's unfortunate, but if we can get meaningful benefit from it, I think it's a good thing for the town. So are there any other comments? I don't think you need a resolution, George.
Not a resolution. I don't know that there's direction. I think it was just feedback from the council on the MOU and its terms. And we this will return to you on the October twenty-first agenda based on the feedback this evening or the afternoon for consideration of the actual MOU.
Okay. And are there any final comments from anyone on the council? Okay, let's move on to item number six, which is to provide direction to staff regarding event management service at Holbrook Palmer Park.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Catering by Dana had been successfully managing event services at Holbrook Palmer Park since March of twenty fourteen. The current term of the agreement was set to expire in March of next year. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and related health orders issued by San Mateo County Health Officer in the state of California, social events and gatherings were initially prohibited and then allowed with limited capacity. The event facilities in Holbrook Palmer Park have been closed to the public since the emergency declaration in March. And then small gatherings were permitted to restart in August of this year with special precautions and limitations on attendees. In August, due to the effects of COVID nineteen, catering by Dana made the difficult decision to close permanently. You know, they are not the only ones in the catering and event business, and restaurants and others have been hit really hard. Nia Hirianto has been the onsite representative for catering by Dana, managing advertisements, reservations and events since June of last year to maintain event service rental facilities and facilitate marketing and coordinating with others. We've contracted with me on a short-term basis to kind of keep that stopgap until we have direction from the council as to what we want to do moving forward. And so we have provided several options for your consideration in the deliberation as to how we'd like to move forward with event and facility services. You know, one option would be to close the events and facilities until, you know, larger events are permitted by the state and by the county. But at that point, if we were to restart, we would still need assistance in terms of event management. We could issue an RFP to find a new service provider. Or we can try and partner in partner with a neighboring jurisdiction to manage events here at the park. Or the other alternative would be to sign the remainder of the contract agreement term to Nia, who's been managing the event services on behalf of catering by Dana since June of last year. The closing of the park, the facility rentals may be acceptable during a short, short run. Maintaining Holbrook Palmer Park and this facility is as a premier location for events has been a priority for the council. Active marketing and management are important in that effort. And it's important to understand that issuance of an RFP and evaluation proposals or negotiations with a potential inter-jurisdictional partner would take time. And so with that, we're seeking direction from the council on if and how we should continue to provide event facility rentals at the park.
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on that, staff's recommendation after some subsequent conversations, at least my recommendation anyway, is that the agreement be assigned to to Nia to continue through March. And that the council also consider providing direction to staff this evening to craft a six-month option at the end of that time period so that we can evaluate how we would produce and release an RFP in that current market. I think the things with COVID will hopefully be improved by that time period, and we'll have a better idea of what to expect from an RFP.
Right. Okay, question to clarification. Bill.
Yeah, make sure I'm on. Okay. We talked about this, or at least, you know, George and I had spoken about it. Maybe we've talked about it in a meeting as well. But, you know, we are going to have this snack bar at at the library. And so, you know, while I think that it it's a good idea to extend it for six months, let's see where we are. But in the RFP, I would think that, you know, it might be worthwhile to somebody who might run the snack bar at the at the town as well as handle the events. And so I think that that should be an option. I'm not sure why that wasn't put in the option that Robert was discussing. But I I would did you give any thought to that? I guess is this supposed to be a question? Did you give any thought to that, to combining these things? We might get, you know, a different, different group of people.
We, I'll answer that one, Robert. The the timing of those two things was a bit different points in time. Don't have firm commitment or direction from the council to include the cafe as part of the RFP for the park. Yes, we certainly considered it, and it's certainly something the council can formally direct. And the twenty-first, when you look at the library cafe RFP, but at this point, there's no firm direction, one way or the other on that.
But since your recommendation was a six-month continuance of of the agreement with Nia, then I I would think that that would should definitely be something that we should put into the RFP then, because, you know, it's just another option. We might find what we've got, maybe.
Yeah, you could totally do that. That's the pleasure of the council.
George. Hello.
Yes.
I'm I'm here on audio. I'm so sorry. Everything just blanked, so.
It's a story of my life.
Well, yeah, Kerry, I got your bad network disease, but I can't see where I can make my face come up or your face.
Well, would you like to ask a question?
No, I don't want to ask a question. What happened?
I don't know. Mine's still on, so it's gotta be at your end there, Elizabeth.
It's my, it is, it's my problem.
It's at your end. And and for as far as Kerry, that's that is it. We could turn on this video anytime you wanted to.
It impacts my questions, too.
I think I'm on the Zoom app. No, George asked me. Anyway, go ahead. I'll I'll catch up. What happened with the rail thing? Did you take a vote?
No, we gave direction and we're off that. We're on the issue of management services in the park.
Got it. Okay.
Does anybody have any questions or clarification? Okay, seeing none. Are there any public comments?
I don't have any public comments on this item.
I don't see any. Okay, I'll bring them back for council comments.
Or Elizabeth, since I got your dot in front of me.
Go ahead, Bill.
So I I agree that I thought George had staff had a great recommendation. We don't know what's going to happen, so it's it's best, we're going to have some things open. And so it's best to have somebody there for the for the next six months. And then we can reassess and we can decide whether or not we want to include the the snack bar in that and make a bundled agreement. But I think that we don't have visibility what's going to happen. And I don't think anybody even bidding at this point in time will have visibility and and they'll be very cautious on what they bid on. So I'd like to just move forward with the, I I think it's prudent to follow, you know, the the city manager's direction. And then we relook at this again at a later time.
Elizabeth, did you want to make a comment? Your your identification is flashing on.
Well, George, George told me to go down to the bottom and say, start video, but it's not working.
Okay. Okay, Kerry, did you want to make?
I I just about the 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 representative, you know, the catering. I I agree with what Councilmember Widmer was just saying that, you know, I think we just have to play it out and have Nia, you know, do what she can do and go out for an RFP at some point in the future. But I don't think we're going to get a lot of a lot of takers at this time until the COVID is resolved.
Through the mayor.
Please.
I will echo the same. And I think that something that Bill had mentioned, you know, it might be prudent for us at the time that the contract ends or in the civic center component, the cafe gets put into play, that, you know, the attractiveness maybe that we know that the person that would be doing the events in the park would actually be in the civic center component maybe something that would be attractive, you know, almost like, I hate to say it, a working office space. Something that, you know, residents could say, oh, if I want to rent something in the park, I know where the person is. I don't know, but it's something to consider. And I think that this would be, it's reasonable in light of our current state to continue with Nia in the manner that we have discussed.
Okay, great. Anybody else have a comment? Mike?
Nothing to add. I agree with what people said.
I also agree. Do we need a resolution, George? I think we probably do.
Motion, direction to staff to authorize the assignment of the agreement to to Nia and her company under its current terms, and then authorize staff at the town's option a six-month extension after that March period of time. And work on the RFP separately.
I think that is the direction.
I will make that motion with that ad, George.
Good. I agree. I'll second.
Okay. Anthony.
Thank you.
Just for the record, we don't have any public comments on this. Councilmember Widmer.
He was muted.
Yes, yes.
At least.
Hi.
Empress.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
I'm Mayor DeGolia.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving to item number seven, which is a discussion and direction on the town's participation in the MOU with the county, San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District, Redwood City, Menlo Park and the county regarding Bayfront Canal and the Atherton Channel flood protection project.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The town has been participating in the Bayfront Canal Atherton Channel flood protection and restoration project since twenty seventeen, when the council approved a memorandum memorandum of understanding with the city of Redwood City, city of Menlo Park, and the county of San Mateo to fund the design, environmental review and permitting and easement acquisition for the project. The county of San Mateo was the lead agency for the design phase, including the environmental review permitting and easement act acquisition on behalf of the project partners. Presently, the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District, which was established in January of this year, has taken on the project management lead responsibilities for the project along with other multi-jurisdictional stormwater projects in the county of San Mateo. The memorandum of understanding for the design phase of the project expired in twenty nineteen. And the district has not yet completed the easement acquisition and permitting for the project. The project design is near completion and the project will soon be ready for a public bid. A new agreement is needed to complete the pre-construction activities and to facilitate funding for the construction, maintenance and operation and mitigation monitoring and reporting effort for the project. Project construction is estimated to commence to begin early next year and hopefully completed predominantly by the end of next year. There are timing issues related to grants and other funding sources to create in urgency for the project moving forward. As far as the project description goes, I'm going to try and share my screen briefly. So give me a second here while I pause. Okay, hopefully you can, you can see that. The sorry about that. The project includes the installation of two five hundred and forty-foot-long, eight-foot-wide by five-foot-tall underground box culverts that will divert water from the junction of the Bayfront Canal East of Bayfront Expressway near Flood Slough, under Marsh Road at the entrance to Bedwell Park to South Bay Salt Pond, Four Bay S five during high tide conditions when the tide gates restrict flow from the canal into Flood Slough. The project also includes a lateral rear diversion structure on the at the Bayfront Canal for the diversion, as well as a trash rack and service grate, the sump pump to drain and drain line connected to Flood Slough as well as access shafts and an outlet structure with riprap at the Four Bay. Part of the work also includes the excavation of the Four Bay to increase capacity as well as some levy work and and mitigation efforts. So that's a brief project description. Project funding has been at this point for the pre for the pre-construction activities provided by the MOU. Red, the city of Redwood City has received approximately one point, a little more than one point one million dollars in property for grant to assist in funding the construction of the project as well as an additional hundred thousand dollars for public outreach. Pursuant to the MOU for the design phase, the town's contribution towards construction would be one point three five million dollars inclusive of five hundred fifty thousand dollars, which would be used to fund maintenance and operation efforts through the first five years following construction. The town currently doesn't have the funds available to support the construction, maintenance and operations in its current budgets. And to to fund that, the county of San Mateo is willing to provide project funding through a lease leaseback agreement. Similar to the COP that was issued for the Town Center project, the lease lease the lease leaseback would need to be collateralized with town property. However, currently all of our town properties are encumbered by the COP for the Town Center Project. Therefore, the lease leaseback financing arrangement would need to be delayed to December of next year. But we're anticipating that the collateralized property at the park would be released and thereby available for use on the lease leaseback agreement. With that understanding, the MOU includes in essence, a holdback of invoicing to the town until that lease leaseback agreement is fully fully funded, so that when the district invoices us, presumably in December of next year, we'll have the financial arrangements in place and be able to pay that invoice. In the interim, the district and the project partners would kind of cover that gap. So the major terms of both the MOU and the lease leaseback agreement are provided in your in the staff report. There still are a few key areas that are being worked out in the legal representation for all of the jurisdictional partners who are still conversing on an ongoing basis to kind of close that gap. There are, as I said, a few key areas that are still yet to be worked out, and that includes short and long term ownership of the facility, as well as a long term, what that long term maintenance responsibility will look like. And so I'm available to answer questions. I know that we have representatives from the Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. I think Len Matterman is on the line, as well as there may be a couple other project partners that are surveying just for part just to see how things are going. So with that, I'm going to stop to share my screen.
Great.
Trying to answer.
Questions of clarification. Mike?
Yeah, I I'm just confused by some of the numbers in the financing. I want to make sure I understand that. Robert, can you walk me through this? I I see the county will lend us, is it 1,350,000 dollars?
Well, I'm going to say that the original arrangement was going to be the 1.1.3, which was going to be our share. In working through the MOU, the district is asking that all the project partners contribute 15% upfront.
I saw that.
So the so the language in the lease leaseback hasn't been updated to reflect that dollar amount. But in your staff report, after taking into account that 15% would be looking at borrowing about 1.15 million dollars.
Okay, so we borrow 1.15. We have to immediately put down a down payment of 172,125. Is that 15% of the 1.35 is that we're supposed to do?
Yeah, we would give them the the 15% and that would be needed prior to them awarding the contract so that they can.
So that comes out of our our immediate.
That would come out of our pocket, understanding that when the district awards a construction contract, they're going to be on the hook to pay the contractor moving forward, and so they will need that initial work.
Okay, I'm just trying to focus on our obligations. I really don't need the the explanation of what it goes to.
I just follow up on that, Mike, because that 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 was one of the questions I had. What the way it's stated is that we're that the county is going to loan us the money and that we will begin to pay that back as soon as the park can secure that loan, which is at the end of December, the end of 2021. So it is, so my question, the follow up is, is that 15% down payment something we would be paying initially or something that the county would be forwarding and then we would be paying them as soon as we can secure the loan?
No, the 15% would come out of our pocket. The county won't provide us with the funds of the agreement until we can secure the loan in December. And so there's a little bit of floating through the initial part of the project that'll kind of be carried informally by the project partners, but once that financing agreement is in place, all of the invoices that were held back would come to us.
Well, but it doesn't look like it's going to be just sort of floated, because the project is supposed to go from January to December 2021. So if we can't secure the loan until December 2021, then the entire amount that we're due to provide for the construction would have been floated and it wouldn't be until we can secure that loan, that 100% of the loan will be going toward paying back all those expenses that have been incurred, so. Is that right?
To a degree, yes. I said, I mean, we don't have the resources to cover it. We are going to obligate via the MOU to, you know, to pay our share. The district will hold back the invoicing directly to the town until December of next year.
Could get back, Robert, just so I understand. This agreement, loan amount 1,147,500, and I'm looking at, I don't know what page this is, page three of five.
Yeah.
What what is that?
That's the terms of the lease leaseback. That's how much we would be borrowing from the county.
So how does that relate to that?
County over a five year term.
That's what we owe after we pay our initial.
After you pay the initial down payment, that would be the remainder of our obligation.
So that's 85% and I'm just confused. What what is that? 85% of the full amount? Is that what it is?
Yeah, so you have the 1.35 that is our obligation. 15% would come out of our pocket. The other 85% would be borrowed from the county and paid back over a five year term.
Okay, and then the reserve requirement, what does that mean? Where's that 130,000 dollars got to go?
That is a requirement, I believe, per the lease leaseback, that we will have to have cash available in our reserves to back up the loan.
Just our, so there's not a separate reserve for this? It really can be just in the the town's.
Similar to the scenario of the COP where we've got to have some reserves to be able to make a payment.
Yeah, okay, and then it says that we're going to be beginning making payments in December of 21, and I understand why. What does that mean? Are we making quarterly, annual, monthly? What what kind of payments are we making?
The payments would come directly out of our tax receipts, so the county would just basically take that from our tax rolls before they disperse them.
So it's twice a year?
Two times a year.
Okay. And then this would be paid off in in November of 2026. Do we know how much we would finally be paying? I'm a little confused by all that.
If the interest rates 2%, but we didn't tabulate the total cost.
Okay. Okay, I think I understand that. All right, thank you.
So I think this, you know, Mike is really right on to drill down with all these numbers, because this really does kind of fundamentally change what my understanding was of with the loan from the county to participate. And if we have to come up with, you know, the 15% of our loan amount upfront, we just don't, I mean, we don't have that bandwidth because of our civic center. And the reason that we were asking for the loan for this so that we could participate was because we didn't have that additional money in our reserves to allocate to this project. I mean, not that I don't think it's a worthwhile project. I just think all of a sudden the financing terms have become a little bit more onerous to us and asking us to make this upfront contribution deposit. And then, so I how did that happen? So my question is, how did that happen?
Well, I'm going to say that it's related to the need of the district to have some money in hand at the beginning of the project to make sure that the project gets off on the right foot financially and that as the obligations from the contractor come in in the beginning of the project, that they can pay those without having to wait for the invoices to come through from the project partners.
Len may be able to address some of that.
You're muted.
Thank you, Len Matterman, I'm. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm the CEO of the new district, Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District, hello. So, you know, I I believe that the 15% upfront is not needed, that we can't, if my impression was, and I believe that we can, we can do this, is that the entirety of Atherton's contribution comes through the invoice in December 2021.
That would make a difference to me.
Okay. Worked out by the county pursuant to their lease leaseback terms.
That's right. I mean, I can't speak to the lease leaseback arrangement. That's a different deal with the county, not with us. But my understanding from the county is that that's the way they were proceeding and and maybe, Robert, you heard from a different part of the county, a different information or something, I don't know. But I'm just saying, as far as the project goes, my my belief, and I'll just say that this is the way it's going to be, is that the entirety of the contribution comes in December 2021 at that point through an invoice to the town.
Through the mayor.
Yes, Carrie, Bill, Bill had a question. Let me let me tell, he's patiently been waiting. Let let him go first, then then we'll go to you.
Yeah, so I've I've got a couple, a couple items here. So first off, Robert, you indicated that, oh, everybody wants to move forward with this because there are other proposals for grants pending. And I can understand that, and that's what I understood when when George and and Rick and I met with the other members. And so we asked and said, well, that's going to be the case. Then, as you get these, we understand we're not paying a fair, you know, what what the other people thought was a fair share, okay? And so that, but over time, depending on the grants that would come in, there might need to be some balancing at, and we would want to have that clear clear that we would get some of that grant money to diminish what we owed, and I didn't see that in the terms. And so I, if in fact, Robert, there are other grants or they're saying that there are other grants, then I think that that would be something that I would be very interested in seeing. Second question is, have the other jurisdictions signed this yet, okay? Or are we being asked to be the first? So I'd like to know the answer to that.
I'll answer it in two parts. So the first part is.
I'm not done with my questions, but that's okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so the first part is that current discussions are probably the first priority in project savings would be to save some of those funds for future maintenance. The second would be that you are correct that the partners want to have some of those savings be divvied up in a manner to recoup some of what you called that inequity share. And originally, we did have language for that, followed by a full share on that, but I think that in some of the more recent rounds of legal negotiations, that language has changed a bit.
We don't want to be the highest payer on a pro round basis, so I think that that needs to be back in. And when we had the discussion, there wasn't much pushback on it. There was some initial pushback. But we said, look, we're not asking you to, you know, get down to a certain level, but at some point in time, we're paying more than our pro round of share compared to the others. And so I I do think that that needs to be put in there. And, you know, and I don't see why we would have to be the first. So the so the next question I would have.
I don't additional grant. I don't, I don't believe there are any additional grants that will be applied for to or to the funding for this particular project.
Well, the only reason I ask, I know that you'd said that. Robert said that there were, and of course, we got the chairman here, so maybe he could comment on it.
Exactly.
Should I go ahead, George?
Yes.
Okay, so I I think what what Robert was was referring to when he said that there's a there's time sensitivity to this process is not the securing of future grants. It's the the deadline that we have from the state to complete the flood protection elements on the grant that was and that was a grant from the Department of Water Resources to Redwood City, and that was mentioned by Robert in the summary. They have said that they need the flood protection, they they awarded this grant in, I think, 2013 or 2014. It was a long time ago, so they're very anxious to either, you know, to move on from this grant process on this one. And they have said that they want the flood protection features completed by December of 2021. Otherwise, there's the grants in jeopardy. So that's what Robert was referring to in terms of the timeliness. There may be other grants that we apply for, and there is still language in the MOU that gets to the point, Mr. Widmer, that you were mentioning, and that is that if future funds are secured, that they'll be put, they'll be, the 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 contributions will be apportioned. It will be the the contribution apportionment by each of the members would be reduced, depending on how much is brought in from the grant. So I I think that's what you're getting to, is that if future money comes in or the project is less expensive than we thought it would be, that everyone's total share would be reduced. Now, the formula for how that works out, I'm not sure that's spelled out in the agreement. I I think Mona might know, because she's been really close to the agreement the last few weeks, but I could look at that right now and I'll stop.
Yeah, we, I would like, I would like to have had that. Okay, so thank you for that. Then a follow on question to, you know, what Elizabeth started. You know, we are very tight on money and 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 actually, we kind of designated our our loan for our civic center based on not going into the into the red or eating into our reserves. Now with this on top of it, at this at this point in time, you know, I, we still want to pay off our loan for our civic center in five years. And so, you know, the question was, and, you know, is this going to impact? I have a few other questions too, but is this going to impact that, especially because there's not only additional, you know, initially, it's an additional like 230,000 dollars, and then on top of that, it's about 202 each 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 year. You know, at at the the times when we would have get our property taxes. And so is that going to impact us being able to recoup and pay off our civic center loan, which is our biggest obligation in in the five year period of time, or is this going to impact it? And so, you know, I'm concerned about that, and especially.
We got that question. What's your next question, Bill?
Okay, well, the next question was a follow on was increasing the reserves. Okay, so I would like George to answer on that. Next was ownership. When we spoke with Larry Patterson at at the time, you know, he brought up the fact that the the flood district was going to be the owner and they would be handling the maintenance. There was never a discussion on maintenance, and now it looks like all that's up in the air. So I'm I'm concerned about that. Maybe we can get an answer on that. Then there was also the the improvement of the facility. So I saw that Redwood City did come up and say, hey, we have no plans to improve the trailer park. The county at that time said, yes, we don't have any plans to improve that, and we will, we'd be willing to put that in writing, because, of course, this will improve the value of those properties. And in fact, they ended up, that didn't show up in this MOU. So it'd be nice if that would get get put back in. And then, when I look at the design, I guess the question is, is we're going to be taking water from one location, adding it to the other location, but it's still going into the bay. So the bay has the same level, so I I heart, I I don't really see how this is going to potentially reduce, especially at high tides, how this is going to potentially reduce the flooding in that area. So there was like four or five questions in there, so if we could get answers to those, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I can talk to the last one, but George, I'll have to leave the financial ones to you.
I could take that one. On the on the financial ones, I can give you the lawyerly answer of it depends. But, you know, all things being equal, if, if, if over the next five years, there's no increases in service costs, there's no additional projects the town wants to do that are beyond what's in our current five year CO, CIP, or there's no additional projects we want to partner with, sure, uh, this is, this won't be a problem. But I don't think that's going to happen, so yes, it, it could impact the town's ability or strategies down the line based on council priorities.
So it's a concern financially.
Yes.
Mona, can we keep to questions, go ahead, Mona.
Um, I wanted to provide a little bit more, thank you, Mayor, I wanted to provide a little bit more, uh, feedback and context for how the discussion about ownership and capping of contributions has evolved over time. So Councilmember Whitmer is correct, that at the onset of discussion, the, one of Atherton's key deal points was that its contribution would be capped at one point three five million dollars. And, um, all parties would be allowed to be reimbursed essentially prorata, uh, shares if there were any additional grant funding or contributions that the parties received towards the payment of the construction of the improvement and so forth. That discussion changed, though, when there was an acknowledgement that we don't have money for operation and maintenance of this improvement designated beyond a certain amount of time, it's not, it's not a uh, improvement that's funded in perpetuity. So the parties agreed conceptually, and this answers part of Councilmember Whitmer's question, this has not gone to any of the other agencies yet. They're all slated to have this reviewed in the next couple of weeks or so. Um, and this is a study session, so you will have an opportunity to actually approve it at a future meeting, but we're trying to seek direction from you today. But the parties conceptually agreed that they would be willing to forego any potential, uh, prorata reimbursements, so to speak. Uh, and have that go to a pot to be used for future O and M beyond the five year. If the district would accept the improvement as complete and own the improvement. The district responded and said that the only way that it would own the improvement is if the parties further agreed that if sufficient funding could not be collected through grants or other mechanisms, then the parties would meet and confer to come up with the cost of O and M beyond that five year after which this MOU terminates, which is estimated to be approximately fifty thousand dollars annually, divided equally amongst all of the parties. So that is, that is where we have left it now, and that's something that we would need direction from you on.
Okay. Elizabeth, do you have a question, I, I, I really want to state a questions, I, I just want to note, we are four minutes from five o'clock. We've got some public comment on this, so it looks like we're going to go past five o'clock.
I just have a quick question, um, what is the life expectancy of this improvement? Uh, and the, the, will it, uh, after five years, need to be completely rebuilt, all new motors or pumps or whatever? And, uh, what, or will it just become obsolete at some point?
Well, I, I'll start it off, and Len, if you want to pick up, you can, I mean, the, the life expectancy of the overall thing is rather long, it is a, predominantly a box culvert that is made out of concrete. And so the intent is that it remain operational, let me say indefinitely. Now, there are going, there is life expectancy for various components that will require maintenance and replacement at different intervals, and so, for example, you know, there are some, uh, discharge pumps that'll be used to empty the box culvert from time to time after rain events when the, um, tides are down. Pumps have a life, uh, you know, it could be maybe about fifteen to twenty years. With proper maintenance, maybe a little longer, but ultimately, they will need to be replaced at some point. And so those cost calculations, I think, are something that the consultants have provided the district in terms of what would be required.
So it's safe to assume the district is thinking that it would be another fifty thousand dollars going past the first five years that divided equally between the five members, then it'd be a ten thousand dollar obligation for the town.
Well, I, I'd like to correct one thing, the estimate per year is forty thousand. And so we got to the two hundred thousand dollars over a five year period. And, uh, and there are four funding partners, and so that's how the fifty thousand dollar additional maintenance, uh, came up with, but, but it is forty thousand a year is, is the estimate. And, and as Mona said, I think that there's still conversation going on about, uh, kind of how, how this should be, uh, how this should be apportioned. And the district agrees to ownership of the facility, but the, but we don't have a funding source for O and M. Unlike some other projects that we're doing in other parts of the county, there's no, there's no source for this. And, uh, and so, as you can imagine, we don't want to take on a responsibility for which there's no, there's no funding at all. And, uh, and so we're still, I think, working out the language in the MOU for that. But the idea is that, uh, we're covered through the first five years, and, uh, as Mona said, that there would be a meet and confer among the agencies at some point during those five years, um, to figure out the long term plan. I did also want to respond to one comment Mr. Whitmer said, or one question, which was, uh, just in terms of how does, how does it make sense that with the bay water level such as it is, um, how this project provides the protection? And essentially, what we're doing right now, the water from Atherton Channel and, and Bayfront Canal flows in to Flood Slough and then into the bay. By building the project, we're sending the water into the former salt pond on the other side of Marsh Road that heads to Bedwell Bayfront Park. And, and part of that pond facility, uh, acts as a basin. And that basin stores the floodwater during the rain event. And, uh, and then we can release the water into the bay on a different schedule. Um, so that's how we achieve flood protection, is that we're basically, we're basically putting pipes into a, into a area that is not received floodwater for this purpose and creating a basin out of it, and that basin provides the protection.
Hey, uh, other questions, Kerry?
Um, I, 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 I did, and, uh, Bill happened to tap into a few of them. But one of my concerns is, you know, uh, this, I don't believe will be the only, uh, agreement that will be asked to be, you know, jumped into, and, um, I, and, and, you know, we haven't been treated very well in a lot of the agreements we've been in. And I, and I, and I'm, I'm not really, question wise, you know, the change in how the financing component, um, has come into play. But the question, I guess, would be on the maintenance component, and, you know, our voting capability when something, you know, are we only obligated to this, because I would assume that the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District has got other projects on their mind. Now, how does that play into how we behave? Meaning, are we going to feel obligated to move into other projects, and will grants be diverted away from this project to other projects? I, I, I don't, I don't see any clarity in that to help us in this project. Because once you have the partners agree to this project, who don't you agree to the money and not to the grants, and if grants come in after the fact, why not use it to layer into another project? Sorry, part of the, uh.
Wait, so the question is, are there other projects on the agenda?
Well, are there other projects, uh, that, uh, you know, obviously in the horizon, and, and what is, what's to prevent any grant funds to go into the next project since the the dollar ramifications to this are being laid out, so if all, all the, the four jurisdictions agree to go in, you kind of have a lock in, there's no, no grant fund attached to this obligation, so why not, at that point, start moving on to your next project, because you teased the next project with the potential grant funds, instead of this project, because this project is tied down, sorry.
Yeah, Glenn, would you like to answer that?
What I would say is, um, we have the grant from the state already, the one that was mentioned. I don't think you should go into this thinking, or assuming that additional grant funds will be found, because it's, it's, we want to get this thing constructed by the end of next year. Our ability to raise money is speculative. We can't, I, I think Atherton, you know, if I were you, I would say one point three five is what we're committing. And if the, if it costs less, or, or, you know, we get grant funds, great, but I don't think that should be an assumption that's made in a deter, you know, to make a decision on this, that's my personal opinion, I don't know, Robert or George, if you want to add to that.
I would agree with that.
Okay, I, I have a question, um, that hasn't been asked, which is the staff report says that the memorandum of understanding for the, the design phase expired in twenty nineteen. And two questions, it says, one, one question is, the district has not yet completed easement acquisition or permitting for the project. So a question is, well, are we ready to go if we don't have the easements or the permits, that's number one. And number two is, from reading the staff report, it looked like there was some money left over from that design MOU. And is that going into this project?
So I'll, I'll, I'll start that off by answering the first, the second part first, and that there's approximately sixty five thousand dollars that, um, are remaining in the pot from the previous MOU. The district will, I mean, with the agreement being expired, there is some, uh, trepidation on some of the expenditures. The enactment of this MOU will allow for those expenditures to be completed by the district. Understanding that the original MOU was enacted without the district because they weren't around back then. And so, the district is actively working with, um, Cargill to try and acquire the easements, and they are in active discussions with the permitting agencies, and they are, I believe, Len, you can chime in, but trying to drive those things home so that this thing can move to construction pretty quickly.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right, um, the easements, uh, we've been working on these easements, uh, and the easements are not just between the district and Cargill, they're also Menlo Park and Redwood City in the county are all part of the, the easement. So it's a complicated easement. We believe that that will be completed by the end of this month. And, uh, the, the easements, in terms of the permits, uh, we have, we have some of the permits completed. But they're not all completed, and as, as I'm sure you know, until you have all of them, you, you can't build, so, um, we're working really hard to, uh, to complete those. You know, our, our hope and, and belief is that by Thanksgiving, we, we can have the permits. They've been, they've been in process for a while, though, and, and state and federal permitting agencies can be sometimes unresponsive or, or complicated, so.
Elizabeth, did you have a question?
No, I didn't, um, I didn't.
Are there any other questions?
I do, we're just, and hey, the mentioning of easements, are there going to be any other cost accrued with, uh, potential easements? Or no, you're saying?
No cost.
I have one last comment, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, one of, uh, Bill's questions was also, are we the, the first, uh, to be asked to sign this particular agreement? And at present, you're, I mean, the answer is no, uh, you're not being asked to sign it this evening either. Uh, you had asked for an opportunity to publicly discuss the project, this is that opportunity to look at the MOU in its current state, it's still being developed and refined, as you heard from the city attorney. Uh, you will be asked to approve, uh, the MOU as it's further refined based on the feedback this evening on October twenty first, but not this evening.
So get our info in down.
Yeah, so seeing no further questions, let's go to public comment.
So we have, yes, sir, we have at least one person who submitted a public comment in writing just before the meeting. Um, we have Gita Dev, the other two public comments were received from Sierra Club, which was provided to council and noted for the record, it's posted online. And another one from Robert Beard also provided to council and posted online for the public record, so Gita, uh, with the permission of the mayor, I'm going to give you an opportunity to speak.
Please. You're on.
Thank you. Um, do I turn on the video, Anthony?
It's your choice.
It's, it's fine. Thank you all, um, I've listened very interestedly to this process, I know it's taken a long time, it's been many years since this has been under discussion, and I really appreciated all the questions that, um, came up. I learned a lot. Uh, I am Gita Dev, I'm with the Sustainable Land Use Committee of the Sierra Club. And, um, I submitted a letter, um, I could just read portions of it. The repeated flooding of the mobile home parks in Redwood City is an environmental issue of great concern and is not sustainable. With the climate change and rising sea levels, these conditions will deteriorate, and they will worsen unless action is taken to address it. And it's really heartening to see the communities that are coming together to provide a robust solution to this problem. One thing I would add to what Len just said is that they've really managed to make this from a problem project to a win-win kind of project. In the sense that by putting the water in the, um, Ravenswood ponds, it's actually a win for the Ravenwoods Pond, like creating wetlands that in fact, everyone will be able to enjoy. Thank you. The point that, uh, the Sierra Club would like to make, which a lot of people are probably not aware of, is that we were looking at three and a half foot sea level rise in twenty one hundred. But this February twenty twenty, the Ocean Protection Council revised their findings, they have been revising their findings every two years, this year, they revised it to advise all California cities that they should plan for three and a half foot sea level rise by twenty fifty. That's in less than thirty years. This is a high risk, uh, situation, and therefore, this would fall into the kind of infrastructure that they are talking about. So, um, Councilmember Lewis's comments are good, and that is, that this needs to be a very robust solution, and I believe it is. In looking at other floodgates and other diversionary, uh, channels that have been done around the bay. So, the, since the sea levels are rising faster, the flooding is not going to get any better, it's only going to get worse. And therefore, we really urge the council to keep moving on this project, um, it's an issue of sustainability. Thank you, it's very startling. And we do understand that there is some concern about these parcels possibly being rezoned by Redwood City, and we are equally concerned about it, let me assure you. And we are going to be working with the county in Redwood City to try to make sure that the low income housing, which is so important for sustainability, is in fact, um, maintained, thank you very much.
We have no other public comments, sir.
Okay, I'll bring it back for council comments, Bill?
Yeah, so, um, first off, I think this is a project we, we should participate in at the beginning. I, I disagree that we should be part of the maintenance, because we are the only participant, should everybody else agree, that is, does not have land out there that will benefit from this. And we've brought that up before, and, you know, it just got brought up again by the public comment, but you know, there is some discussion about redevelopment of the, of the parcel. And, you know, I would like to see in there, I, I would like to see relief on the ongoing maintenance. And you know, I would like to see in there, I I would like to see relief on the ongoing maintenance, relief and uh in the MOU, if if the rest of the council supports that, for the very reason I said, as well as, you know, I think I, the county needs to make their commitment, just like Redwood City did, that said that currently they have no plans to improve. Um, and so, and uh, you you know, I think the next time we look at the at the budget and things like that, we need to, you know, reassess our ability to pay back everything that we're signing up for now because this is a problem. Okay, thank you.
Okay, other comments?
We'd appreciate some additional feedback from the council on that um ongoing maintenance commitment issue.
Uh, I'll chime in and through the mayor. Um, I agree with the maintenance issue. Um, I think that there 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 is clearly uh long-term development plans out there, and so this will be an enhancement for that area um that we will not receive a benefit from. Um, but I do think that, you know, in the spirit of a good project, um, yeah, this obligation may make sense with the details ironed out. But um, I don't particularly want any more surprises.
Okay. Other comments? Mike?
Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to, you know, get my two cents worth in here. Um, the, I guess, one of the overarching comments I want to make is people must think we're crazy because we sit here and we focus on what appear to be small amounts of money by virtue, you know, by the standards of other communities around the bay and around the state. I don't know, as our regional partners understand, that a million, $350,000 over three, over five years, rather, is actually significant to us. A- and it's material and, you know, it affects our ability to do some other things and it um will result in in literally encumbering our park, our one park will be encumbered until this is paid off. It's, so you know, having said that, I I say that really just to give context so that, you know, our colleagues don't think we're we're crazy focusing on such small amounts, but our our overall budget, as you all know, is, I don't even know, this should be what, about $16 million? So you know, this is a measurable percentage of that. Having said that, I I do think it's important that we participate in significant regional, you know, partnerships. Um, we have some responsibility here, I believe, and and therefore I think we should uh participate. I am, like everybody else, I don't, I I'd love to see us cap it at at one as small as we can cap it candidly, you know, 1350, if that's where we are. Um, I I don't think it's fair to expect us to have a one-fifth operating obligation going forward. I'd like to, I I don't agree with that concept. Uh, so you know, there's my thought. I do think, and I'm sorry, that that again, we do have regional obligations. I think it's an important thing to do. I think that that it is, you know, uh, we are contributing to issues that we can help solve, and I think it's our obligation to help solve it. So I I would support it. I I wouldn't support any more than this, and I'm uncomfortable even stretching to this level just because of, you know, other other demands on our budget. That's right.
Okay, um, I'm going to take a public comment from Dave Pine, who just came in and would like to give a public comment. Dave, Samatao County Board of Supervisors. Dave, you're, uh, Anthony, do you need to unmute him?
I'm okay. I'm off back now.
Okay, great.
Yes, thanks, Mayor DeGoyan, and greetings to uh the council. Uh, I chaired the new Samatao County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District, and I think as most even of you know, one of my big policy focuses over my tenure on the Board of Supervisors is to prepare the county for sea level rise. So um, that's a uh, a challenge um, which generations of leaders will have to address. Uh, we are the most vulnerable county uh in the state to sea level rise. And I'm very excited that we have this new district set up. And this is really our 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 first uh project that we're tackling as the district. And it's really uh the type of project the district wants to um show that it can um, that it can quarterback and execute on. Uh, it's really difficult to deal with flooding and sea level rise when you have multiple jurisdictions. And it really forces um taking a, taking a regional, a regional view. So you know, in 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 the short run, um, you know, Atherton doesn't benefit is, you know, in the same way as Redwood City from this project. But as we look out into the future, it's this sort of partnership that will be necessary to protect against higher levels of, against significant sea level rise and which will be important to, important to Atherton. So you know, i- in time, these collaborations will yield benefits uh to all. Um, I for one am sensitive and appreciate Atherton's unique financial restraints. And I I I know that everyone's worked hard to try to accommodate that. Um, it might have been mentioned before I joined, but you know, if you if you allocated cost just based on water contribution, you know, Atherton's contribution would be more along the lines of 2.8 million. Quite some time ago, uh, in the early, in the first, first discussions on the planning, uh, an agreement was reached that the amount should be capped at 1,350,000. And I believe, I believe that cap is is going to be memorialized as a, as a firm cap in the MOU. Uh, someone on the staff can correct me. So you know, that uh, we, we understand, we understand that there's only so much Atherton can do. And then they, and then to make things more complicated, as everyone knows, um, because of all the, you know, the importance of getting the civic center constructed and such. You know, the county is gonna work, wants to enter into a transaction with Atherton to facilitate the financing. Um, you know, on the, again, this, I guess, is a question to the staff, and again, uh, I think that cap is 1350, including the operating expenses. Um, maybe someone could clarify on that. But uh, the MOU, as I, as I understand, only addresses operating expenses for five years, which are relatively nominal when you split them across the uh, all the jurisdictions. And you know, in 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 my mind, it's still, it's kind of all part of the project. So I I I, you know, I I don't, because of the short tenure of that commitment, you know, to my mind, it's it's really part of the bigger, the bigger whole. But in sum, um, this is, this project is incredibly important for the residents of these mobile homes. You know, I I read in the staff memo, which I thought was really well done, it's been something like 40 major flood events and you see the pictures of those residents wading through the water. It's it's really uh, it's just something that has to be remedied. And and we've struggled uh as a region to deal with this. So now we're very close to breaking through. And um, I really appreciate Atherton's participation and with these regionals, with these sort of complex regional answers, there's, it's it's never, it's never perfect, right? It means never, every jurisdiction usually has some kind of a uh, an argument to be made that it's, you know, could be balanced differently or some of the fine points could be handled differently, but in in a totality, it's a big win. So thank you for your consideration of this. And and again, I I apologize, but it may, maybe staff could clarify, isn't that 1.35 million a firm cap regarding, including operating expenses?
Yes, well, it was when we first started talking about it. For five years, we're talking about, right? Only five years?
Yeah, yeah, five, yeah.
Well, it's been increased. They want to add the maintenance cost included in that, which never was part of the deal, Dave.
Well, no, it was 1.3 million dollars and there was $50,000 of maintenance added on top of it. So it's now 1.35.
Oh, I see, I see.
But that only covers five years. There's an open question about who owns and operates and is responsible for the improvements after that five-year period.
I understand. Uh, what I, yeah, I didn't appreciate that that um, that that 50 had been added recent, had been added recently. So, okay, I I I understand.
Yeah. Okay, Elizabeth, did you want to make a comment?
So my my comments are uh very uh short. I think this is a very worthwhile project for Atherton to partner with the county and Redwood City and um Menlo Park and trying to mitigate the flooding in that area. I think that um, what what we do now is i- in partnership with the district, as Supervisor Pine indicated, this is the first project that the district is undertaking. And the district formation was really uh uh brought about by Congresswoman Jackie Speer uh challenging Samatao County uh to uh do something like this, to bring together a district so that we could in the future uh attract more uh federal funds. And so I think if we can make a successful partnership out of this, I think that uh it'll kind of jumpstart the flood district in in a, in a big way. I hear what uh my colleagues are uh um concerned about, especially in the uh, after the five years of operating expenses. Um, that if in fact, um, Redwood City or Menlo Park or the county starts to uh redevelop this a- area and it's because of the benefit that we have uh helped create, I think there should be some um, some way that uh our um ongoing obligation could be diminished uh if that were the case. We have some assurances that they have no intention of uh uh upgrading and upzoning the 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 property um and that the affordable housing uh given by the trailer uh community is something that is a very valuable uh for the, for the cities. So I I am wholeheartedly in favor of it. I think that what was a little um put off about was the financial down payment uh that I think that was not something I was aware of that we were going to be required to do. And every penny that we have right now uh in excess monies is going to the civic center, and that's why we were asking for the financing from the county, which I'm very appreciative of. So um, I think there's going to be more uh partnerships that we're going to have to enter into to help solve some of the infrastructure flooding problems, such as along El Camino Real uh in our um uh town of, you know, Stockbridge and Tuscaloosa uh because of a blocked channel going into Redwood City and through. And uh I think the more we can do to save our bay and to try to mitigate the uh uh overflowing of the bay, the better our communities are going to be. So that's what I think.
Uh, yeah, I'll I'll just finish that with uh, I, I'm not going to repeat what everybody else has said, but I support uh all of the comments. And uh, Dave, the the concern that you may have missed before, you heard Elizabeth's comment was uh, since Atherton has no property that has any potential of being benefited by this work, uh, the other three jurisdictions all have property uh in in the flood zone area. And uh, and the concern is that if that property, uh, which is in other jurisdictions, private property is improved as a result of public funds, improving that property, which we know has happened many, many, many times in the history of our state, that uh those properties become worth, worth much more because they don't have the same flood risk. Then uh if the tax dollars or development fees that come in from development on those improved value properties uh don't in some manner return to those of us that have funded it, then you know, we've ended up funding improvements to private property and seen no benefit for it. Uh, and I think that's a valid concern. And we've gotten some representations from the county and Redwood City that they have no current intent to develop those properties. Uh, and as long as they remain ho- mobile home parks, I don't think it's a problem. But if they get developed and and we know that property in that area, well, what, there've just been three large hotels built down there. And that whole area is what is being improved in uh in in our space. So there's valid concern about that. And if, you know, we would like to see that addressed in the MOU, and it's not addressed. And I don't think it's realistic at this stage to get it addressed, but it's a concern that's been voiced. But at the end of the day, this is an important project because it's the first project for the district, and it's a joint project to deal with drainage issues that, you know, we've wanted to see happen before. And I'm sorry that Woodside isn't a part of it because they contribute to the water. Uh, but uh, I think that uh this is a good joint effort to move forward.
I mean, I I don't know if it's, it's fun for me to speak again, but uh I I could just react to your, your comment if you'd like.
Uh, sure, go ahead, because everybody else on the council has voiced the same concern.
Right. Yeah, I I I hear the concern. I, no, I would say it's a you know, I I see what you're saying, obviously. You know, in my experience, you know, I'm not familiar with flood control projects that have have, you know, have, where this issue has been raised, where, you know, one portion, one geography may be contributing uh to a flood control solution that ultimately helps another geography more, particularly in the light of development. I I I don't, I don't think it's something that's typically put in the contracts. I guess not to say that it shouldn't be. But I I would also say just gun, guy taking it up 50,000 or 100,000 feet. You know, it's at some point, the um flood control projects and sea level rise defenses are going to require contributions for every, every, everyone in the county, including all the areas that are not not remotely near the bay, all of the uh higher elevation jurisdictions. Where again, those, those sort of fortifications will, will, will help the land use uh in that, in that regard. So it's, it's, it's not uh, you know, i- i- I I don't know if it's a really easy problem to solve for because every project is going to yield certain be, more benefits to the kind of immediate geography than some of the more remote geographies that may be helping for it. So.
Okay, well, thank you. And I think Len wants to make a concluding remark here.
Well, I, yeah, I don't know about concluding, but thank you. Um,
That's wishful thinking.
I would, I would just say, uh, in the, the, the Atherton's contribution after the five years, if the, if the estimate for O and M pans out, is $7,200 a year. Um, I think that we can look at, um, you know, and and this is, I guess, your direction to Mona, but we can look at how that uh 7,200 estimated cost could be tied to potential land use changes. And see if if there's like role in the MOU as a financing mechanism. Um, I think that the concern by the other councils, you know, as you can understand, not finding a future council on a land use decision, that that won't go. But in terms of the financing piece, we could take a look at it and uh and get back to the council um when you consider this on the 21st.
Right, because we we asked for that to be in the MOU.
Right. From, from the very beginning, when we first started meeting as a subcommittee.
Yeah, and I think Mona could, could explain the, the limitation on binding a future council, or George better than I. Um, but I'm not talking about that. I'm just talking about kind of the financing part of that equation.
Well, 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 Len, we're not talking about binding a future council. We're buying, we're essentially saying that the property taxes that will be accrued from those jurisdictions would be automatically diverted according to the people that contributed to the improvement of those property, of those property taxes.
Understood.
So, so that's not a council decision. That that would, that's a contractual decision.
If I, if I could also just make one final point, this will be concluding on my part, is um, in relation to what uh Dave Pine said, there are other projects in the watershed that are regional stormwater projects that are of value downstream in the Bayfront Canal uh Channel area, also of benefit to Atherton, uh, just that Atherton is a town. And uh, and so just as Atherton is participating in this project, you know, we would look at those as regional projects that have regional benefit and regional contributors. Um, so, so this is not, I think, in my mind at least, it's not the end of the story with the Atherton Channel. It's the first project of what should be other projects as well. Thank you.
Okay. George, do you need anything else on this?
I think we have some pretty solid direction. Mona, you have some pretty good direction as well?
I do. If I could just repeat it, just to make sure that I have captured the desire of the council. The council as a whole is in agreement with the MOU and the concept of the MOU. No to ongoing O and M beyond the five years, the funding for Atherton's share to be capped at 1.35 million dollars. And Atherton will not be involvement in the ownership of the improvement as the improvement does not occur in Atherton. And the remainder of the agreements is set forth in the MOU and discussed about in the staff report were acceptable.
Then there was the, the county saying. There was the point about the county also echoing the, the comments of Redwood City about not redeveloping that property.
Right, there is a section in the MOU that explains that. There is no desire to do that. We can add, ask the county to, to have that language of intent, but again, as Mr. Matterman has articulated.
We understand, we understand. But the county did agree that they would put that in when we had our first meeting and that's so, you know, let's just make everybody. Keep their word, that's all.
Sure.
And Mona, is there any room on the, the initial down payment? Mr. Matterman said from his perspective there was, but it's actually a county issue. Is there any, is there any room there?
We'll, we'll talk to the county about that. That, that came separately from the district. He's, he's correct. That came from the county themselves in terms of their financing mechanism. So we'll circle back with them, given that Len's articulated, he doesn't need it and he would take our full payment in December of 2021.
Okay.
Okay, I think that we're done with this and I think that's the end of the meeting. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
See you guys later.
Thank you.